Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Item number three is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. Any requested action items must be scheduled for a future meeting date. I see no one in attendance would like to speak. We'll move on to item four, which is approval of the agenda.
I don't want to see any of my contacts.
I was like, I know I shut my phone off.
This was the iPad, sorry. Are there any changes to the agenda? You don't have any? Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any other comments on the agenda? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item five is consent agenda items. We have approval of minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, and approval of the human services report. Is there a motion?
I have one thing to note that I handed out, a personnel action notice this morning with just a minor change to show an hourly rate rather than a salary rate. So that would be the only change, not an addition, just a change in the personnel action notices on the consent agenda.
Okay, we'll add that to consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Crohman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item six is routine business. We have some claims. Claims payable and separate Department of Revenue documents. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments on those claims?
There's also one change that I handed out this morning from the tax sale redemption. You'll see there's two amounts highlighted over on the right. It was that that 5,400 was down and included in the $1,600 amount, and that needed to be changed to be paid back to us. So that's the only change. The amount, the grand, the bottom balance did not change.
Any other comments?
I had a question for Brian on the highway, the Myerlink Farm Service.
Yeah, we bought a push blade or box for the front of a motor grader, and we used that last year quite extensively. We have another one, but since after the first of the year here, we're getting another payloader. We'd be able to use it on three of our payloaders, and what we use that for is pushing back. It's kind of something I hope we don't have to use, but it's kind of looking like we're gonna...
These are the type they use in parking lots.
Yeah, great. I mean, they're 14 feet wide. One of the things that we have been using a lot for too is our interstate bridges. We can't push the snow over the guardrail on the interstate, so we gotta go out and push all the way across so we don't, you know, dump snow over the edge and end oncoming traffic. So that's another thing that we use these a lot for, and one got spread out an awful lot last year when we, when we really got wind, so we kind of felt like it was necessary to have two. Just to, you know, stretching from one end of the county to the other. It's quite a ways to travel with a motor grader.
Any other question on the claims? If not, we'll call the roll.
Forsma?
Aye.
Crohman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move on to item B, which is department head reports, and since you had your microphone on, Brian, we'll let you start.
Well, since we were talking about snow, I know I don't have much to report here, but we had that event come in this last weekend here. We were lucky enough that the guys were able to get some time off over Christmas. But Saturday, we had that event moved in. We had about around an inch on Saturday. We didn't end up going out. We had some favorable temps and then some rain, but Sunday morning, we were out. It just seemed like it kept coming, and a lot of it turned to ice. I know we're not the only ones facing it. The interstates and the, and the state highways are just about as icy as our roads are. We're out this morning and gonna try to get a lot of that ice off the road, but it was just tough with the wind and, and the other events. So with the, with the continual snow, it seemed like we were getting over the weekend, but now that we're gonna get some sunshine, we're hoping to get it taken care of. I guess that's all I got to report.
Any questions for Brian? Thank you. And hopefully, we don't have any more of those snow events in January. Maybe we can get through that all together, save some snow budget. Right, right now, we'd like some sunshine, help with the ice. Marty, the Sheriff's Department, please.
Morning.
Morning.
Well, for the present time, we're kind of down in numbers for the jail. We have 34. Depends on what happens this afternoon, but that's been kind of nice. Otherwise, it's been in the 40s. If you notice, the daily population to date has been 40 per day the last three months. You know, most of this month was 44. November was 47, 47 in October, so we've been in that higher 40s. So it's kind of nice to have a little low right now to, to get things done. I have one still, one inmate. I had four at Falk County, and I just have one there now, and we're gonna bring him back on Thursday, get him back here. There's no use just having the one there, because we got room for that person now. 24/7 continues to stay busy with 156 participants. PBTs are 55, are on PBTs, so they come in twice a day. Got 22 on SCRAM, 74 are coming in on UAs, and just one on GPS at the present time. Also, just been busy mental health-wise, is that we had one transport yesterday to Yankton, and then this morning, 16-year-old transport to Sioux Falls. So we've probably had probably three or four in the last few. Over Christmas, it was good. Just before Christmas, we had a couple that we transported. Also, working with, with Vicki, with bills on, on the jail side is, got some outstanding bills that it's hard to get these hospitals to get, to send me the bills. I would think they would want to finish out their year, just like we want to finish out our year, but I can't get them to send me bills. They've been working with Sioux Falls. They promised me last week to send me bills, but I did get some, they told me what we kind of owe is that for the baby, it was just a little bit under $23,000. Otherwise, Medicaid picked up the rest of the baby of the inmate that was down there. What's, other bills that are starting to come in are like anesthesia and those types of things, so they're kind of coming in too. And we're trying to keep, I'm trying to keep tabs with, with Vicki, so we'll, we'll be okay getting money in there. And then I did have an inmate that fell in, and broke her wrist, and that was around about $1,700. What's nice is we get Medicaid prices at our hospitals, so it's more than that, but they treat us really good. It's nice to have a, a local hospital like that. Otherwise, Thursday, we're gonna go live with our laptops with TeleMed at 5:00 on Thursday. I'm gonna have one more training session with the deputies in a policy and procedure for Tele, for TeleHealth. We could have used it about four or five times in the last, the guys go out on a call, and then we've, they weren't to the point that they needed to be committed, but we had to bring them in, have a counselor come in, and then have a safety plan. So I'm anxious to see how this TeleHealth will eliminate bringing them, have to come in and get a, you know, a safety plan out in the field and so forth. Continue to still have problems with one of the townships, and I've been bombarding the state's attorney with emails from other members of that, and he's been really good about having some ideas how to handle that, so we, hopefully, we'll resolve that shortly. And so no more gloom and doom, or doom and gloom, or what I want to say. I had a, a nominist, Secret Santa again, that gave us 10, 10 $100 bills, and so we made 10 people happy at Christmas time. I gave each deputy $100 on a card, and says, "Go out and find someone to give $100 to." And, and they did a good job of finding, finding ones that they've stopped, and accidents and so forth. A young lady had two small kids. She just bought the car. She's going for Christmas, and got into an accident, and, and thought that was a good one to give $100 to. So the car wasn't, wasn't that great a car in the first place, and then hit a deer, and she couldn't get to Christmas. But so the guys found 10 people to give $100 to. So that was, that was kind of neat. So you guys have any questions?
Any questions for the sheriff? None. Thank you, Marty. I'm gonna go to Kristen to the BCOEC report.
Look, no notes. So just a couple of things we've had happen here about two weeks ago, because Christmas was last week. We had the key for the vault break off in the door. We had had a few issues with it in the past, and so we did have to call the locksmith, lock Smith out to have him drill the key out, and in turn, we kind of discovered that the original lock to the vault was really not put in the way a vault lock should have been put in originally. So we have replaced that completely with a new set of keys and put it back to a way a vault lock should be. So we kind of had that issue. We also had the electronic filters, which should last us about 18 months. They didn't this time, so we did have to go ahead and put that order in earlier than anticipated. So those have been put in an order, and they should be installed in about January. So kind of looking at that timeline, also kind of gauging with our PRC committee based on the number of shooters, that's what we're gonna have to go by for the replacement of, of those filters instead of trains recommendation. We're just not gonna be based on, you know, life, lifetime numbers. We're gonna have to go off the basis of shooters instead of that. So with that, we are adding up all of the end-of-year figures right now to see where we're at. Working with Vicki to make sure that those numbers do add. So the next commission meeting on the 7th, we should be able to have end-of-year numbers, end-of-year membership numbers. We had a great rush here at the very end for people taking advantage of gift cards as well as end-of-year memberships for people. We have a lot of memberships that are expiring. I think we set out 54 expiration notices for the next four weeks or so, so we should have a lot of renewals there for people who are calling in to actually renew over the phone. Our classes, our enhanced concealed carry classes have been full at 12 participants the last three months in a row, so that is definitely up, and we have a new way of putting those classes together where people actually have to prepay for them. So instead of paying that day of, they're actually having to prepay for those classes. So we've got a lot better turnout, because people are having to pay for their seat, and so they have a little skin in the game, making them actually want to, to come in. 4H starts here on Saturday, so they're gonna start up their 4H shooting sports programs, so we have all of that worked out with sides of the archery. We have the Joe Ad program. Their winters will start here in January. We have the airplane organization that is started on Tuesdays, so if you're ever interested in watching model airplanes fly through the archery range, come in on Tuesdays. So we have a lot of activity coming up. January 22nd, the facility will close at 3:30 in preparation for some joint training between Brookings Police, the sheriff, and SDSU. So we will be closed that night going forward. They'll have some, a lot of different training aspects. Marty could probably tell you more than I can what they're gonna be doing, but they're gonna be using the whole facility for a couple of different things. Other than that, we're doing a lot of police qualifications right now, so we are getting heavy usage out of the range as well. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thanks.
None. Thank you, Kristen. Next, we'll go to Mike, Veterans Affairs.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the last commission meeting, of course, we had a, a regional meeting here at the same time the commission meeting was for the VA side of things, and the state likes using our facility. There's plenty of parking, and it's also a nice facility, along with the fact that it has projectors for them to do the training throughout the state at one time using the projectors. As far as numbers go, the veteran side of things, we've seen somewhat of an increase, probably about 10 to 15% increase on that side, and on the welfare side, it's been kind of steady. This last month, we have been dealing with more funerals. Plan about five a year, and we've had three in this last month, so hopefully that stops pretty quick. And that's about all I have.
Any questions for Mike? Hang on. Thank you, Mike. Bob, I'm gonna put you up next. Emergency planning and building.
Good morning. On December 10th, I attended the City of Brookings City Council meeting and discussed our pre-disaster mitigation plan that everyone has approved now except for one community, and they're supposed to approve it next week, and that paperwork will be sent in, and we should have an approved mitigation plan. December 11th, Richard attended a CAFO environmental training session put on by South Dakota State University and Department of Environment and Natural Resources in Huron. On the 17th, me and Richard had a meeting with some citizens from Brookings, and the main discussion was Deer Creek Drainage over to the east side of Brookings. Some individuals came in, and they're concerned with the bypass going in and the drainage over in that, that part of the county. So I got with Ms. Stephenson, and we are, we are gonna schedule a drainage board meeting for January 21st, and we'll, we'll discuss Deer Creek on the east side, and then we're also bringing in the Madera Township issue and, and give the board an update on that during that same meeting. And December 18th, we received a call that the Coyote Ridge Wind Farm is fully operational now, or fully constructed. They're still wiring some of the final wind towers, but it is actually producing electricity. This is our latest wind tower, wind farm, our fourth one, and it is starting to produce energy, and it's a good thing for Brookings County. That means it gets on the tax rolls a little bit faster. They are gonna come in for conditional use to keep their lay-down yards open an extra six months so they can come in and clean the area up properly. So that's gonna be heard next Tuesday night. December 19th, we had a census, Brookings Census Counts Committee meeting. It was the first one. Our next meeting scheduled for January 19th, 2020. At that meeting, I had stated that we was gonna try to get some social media advertising done. That fell through, so what we did is we ran a full-page ad in the Town and Country Shopper for Census 2020. Basically, took information that we retrieved off from the National Census thing, and we put down a series of information bullets that hopefully people will, will take it and read it, and, and the main thing on the census is if you get anything in the mail from the US Census, I'd recommend you just keep it until you finally, finally submit your final census tally. As, as the ad states, there are some different things happening this year. A lot of it's gonna be electronical, and if you don't have a computer at home, and we understand a lot of citizens don't have computers at home, it, there's gonna be places that you can come into town and sit down at a computer. I know the library's gonna do one. We haven't gotten to the discussion yet if the county's gonna have one in our, in this particular building or not, but I do know the Census Count Committee, they're talking about having one over at the library, so that's, some of that's still ongoing, going work. Today, I've got an exercise over at United Living Center at 10:00, so I'll be leaving after, I'll have Richard come up and take my place here in a little bit. And other than that, that's all I've got. I wish everyone a happy New Year. Any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Pierce.
Yes, ma'am.
No.
Sorry.
Okay. On that mailing, there's gonna be a barcode, and if you throw it away, then you end up waiting until the people come around door-to-door, which is very expensive. You need that barcode code either to mail yours in, or to call yours in, or to...
Use the computer.
Use the computer to send it in. So it's that barcode that is new this year that's a big deal thing. And Bob, could you just talk a little bit about how the towns, you know, Aurora, Upton, White, how, how are you gonna reach out to get the complete count? This group for the city is not going to be making any of those contacts to our small towns, so...
I am projected right now in February, I'm required by our state and local agreement to go around every community once a year, typically in September. This year, we're gonna move it up to February. And information we get from the Census Count Committee, I'm gonna go ahead and take in at February emergency management briefing, and it'll just be two briefings. I'll give an emergency management briefing, then I'll also give a briefing on the census. There's a separate, separate briefing to them. And the last thing I didn't talk about is, I passed out to everyone, and we put it everywhere, is the, these are the numbers as of last Friday, December 27th, 2019, of the individual assistance provided to Brookings County by communities. Since you, thank you for jogging my memory about the, about the small towns. This shows the areas now. One thing to be cautious of, when it says Brookings and Volga, Lake Campbell falls under both. Lake Campbell, if you divided it in half, half of it goes to the Brookings side, and the other half goes to the Volga side. That's why you see a large, a large amount from Brookings and a large amount from Volga. Those are typically the people around Lake Campbell, and there's some other farmhouses that probably took some damage. But so far, and you can see that home repairs and rental assistance is by far, hands down, the biggest thing where FEMA's spending money at in the county. And then for your personal property, you can see it's only $18,000. They're not gonna come in, you know, we got a lot of reports of, "I lost a lot of stuff in the basement." Well, unfortunately, that's not something that FEMA typically, you know, FEMA wants you to have a safe place to live, and that's where the money's going into foundation repairs, and if your, if your furnaces are out and stuff like that, that's what FEMA's going after. And we'll get another update. I'll send these out to you once I get them. Anything else?
Additional questions? Commissioner Pierce.
Just one more thing on the census, because you guys told me to be the liaison on the census. Bob has $500 in a budget for census, and we have extra money in our contingency, and I'm wondering if $500 is gonna cover what we need to do to get the census done? And I know you didn't bring that concern. You think you've got enough money for what we need to do to do our advertising and get out some radio announcements and, and do all the stuff we need to do in the county?
Well, I spent the $500 on my newspaper ad.
Okay. See, that's what I'm concerned about.
So any contingency, though, would, would only be that we have this year. He'd have to spend by 5:00 today.
Okay.
So we're looking at 2020, and if there is a need there, then we'll have to look at the 2020 budget.
And I've got $1,000 in the budget for 2020.
Okay.
I'm a little bitter off.
Okay.
I, I was concerned about, I knew, I, I, I'm not the kind of guy that spends money just to spend, because I got it in the bank, trust me. But this one, this one, we did, we did make sure we could get it spent.
We just would really like to have that complete count in each of the small towns, which is huge. And as you're talking to people, April 1st is census day, so we would like everybody to have their stuff in before April 1st.
And we'll make sure the copy of the ad gets emailed to every one of the city clerks in all the small towns, so they can give it to the mayor, and hopefully, they can start doing little miniature push-offs. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Bob. All right, we're gonna, we've got about five minutes. Jacob, I'm gonna start with your report on equalization. You're on the agenda with a lot of documents. I may interrupt you at 9:00 if we need to, but go ahead.
I've got a summary of those five documents. I think we can get it done.
Okay.
Our office has kind of wrapped up our process of setting the assessment values for 2020. They don't go out to the public until March 1st, which is in law, but we've kind of completed that process and sent our intentions to Department of Revenue for their review, and then those documents that were sent to Revenue are also on the agenda today in their entirety. Important highlights of those documents would be on the ag side. The top dollars for our productivity numbers for 2020's assessments, the crop top dollar saw almost 1.5% decrease, and then the grass top dollar was a 3.1% increase. And what that means for Brookings County is the total ag land value countywide is $1,124 million. In comparison to last, or 2019's values, we were at $1,139 million. So we saw 1.3% decrease overall in the ag land values countywide, and that's about a $15 million in dollars decrease in ag land values. On the non-egg side, we had 510 arms-length transactions to study in Brookings County from November 1st of 2018 through October 31st of 2019. And arms length means there's no pressure to buy or sell. The sales are advertised. There's no relationship between buyer and seller, so they're good sales to study what the market is trending. To start off with, we, we looked at those sale prices, compared them to the 2019 assessed values, and what we came up with was a median of 85.5 and a half, and a coefficient of dispersion that tells us how far away all of those sales are from the median of a 17.42. The lower number for the COD is better, and South Dakota law requires that the COD is under 25, so we're good. You know, our first look is good there. What we did at that point was we broke down all of those sales into individual neighborhoods, and we studied like properties against each other, and we made adjustments to individual neighborhoods. After we applied all those adjustments, most of the adjustments were up. That's the way the market's trending. We did have a few neighborhoods that saw negative adjustments. After we applied all those, our new median is 90.1, and our coefficient dispersion got better. It went from 17.5 down to 12.83. With these changes implemented, the countywide total full and true value is 3.6 billion, and that's up from 3.52 billion. It's 2.1% increase in non-egg values from 2019 to 2020, or $75 million in increased value. Using these factors in the COD, and if everything goes through with Department of Revenue, our taxable factor for ag again will be 85. We're considered to be at 100% of market value with that productivity method. And then the non-egg ratio should be .943, and in comparison, 2019's ratio was a .923. It's important to note that these numbers are under review currently by Department of Revenue, and they are subject to change, and we'll go over the final, final numbers with you during the County Board of Equalization in early April. Any questions?
Any questions? You got by easy.
Thank you.
No questions. Thank you, Jacob. We're gonna go ahead and move into our 9:00 scheduled agenda item, which is Catherine Eberlein. Catherine, please come on up. Bike rodeo request. This is a discussion of possible action to approve use of the west parking lot of the government center. Catherine, you have, the west one is out front. That's the south.
The employee one.
That's the south of it.
Yeah, the, okay, sorry, wrong direction, south.
All right, we'll change out your requests for the south.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
We, at the library, have been coordinating a bicycle rodeo in Brookings for, nobody can remember how long. Last year, some of the participants that have been helping for 30-plus years, the register person was interviewing them, and they couldn't even remember how long we've been having this. The locations changed a number of times. We used to have it between the library and the courthouse, but that road is rough, to say the least. When Cadoodle Way opened up, we had it at the Children's Museum, but they said that's very hard on them, because they actually shut their parking lot, they're parking down all day because, so that their patrons don't take up the room for the bike. So this year, we were trying to find an alternative location. So what we're hoping to do is have the bike rodeo in this back parking lot, and just close the parking lot in the afternoon. We figured this... We figured, especially since it's the employee lot, we'd be able to, you know, send out emails and just ask everybody. It would probably be from about noon. It would be, the request that I have is from noon to 2:30, the bike rodeo's at 1:00. And basically, it's just letting the kids practice their bicycle skills, they decorate their bikes, we have a little obstacle course that they ride through, and they practice left turns and right turns. Anybody that doesn't have a helmet, the Optimist Club of Brookings buys helmets and provides them to the kids. So as part of the street closure application, it's just one of those things that I have to ask everybody involved. So it was a matter of just asking whether or not the county side of the parking lot use would mind us using that parking lot for the kids for, like I said, about two, I'm figuring two and a half hours, because they've got to just draw out the lines for the obstacle course, have the event for an hour, and then just get everybody out so that, you know, cars can park again. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, questions?
What date?
Oh, it's on June 10th.
Yes, the question is, logistically, is that an issue of problem?
I don't think so. I mean, we would just notify, I think, just staff parks back there right now from both city and county side, so it would be a matter of letting them know ahead of time that to park elsewhere, I think.
And that's why we wanted to use this one, because we didn't want to impact any of the public. So that way, all the public parking's available, and, you know, everybody's open for business. It doesn't, you know, impact any of the, you know, those kinds of things.
It's one afternoon and...
Yeah. Question I have, Catherine, is have you made any attempt to talk to the city?
Yeah, I have, I have to, I've talked to Bonnie, and she's going to have Asia, the director, bring it to, you know, the leadership meeting. It's one of those things, I can't even turn the form in until I've notified the neighbors, and I guess you guys are the neighbors.
Here's my concern at this point, is that I think this should probably just go to the Joint Powers Board, which is the county and the city representation on how we use the facilities, building and maintenance and upkeep. And I think that has represented some both our commission and their council. And I think, we've got time. I'm not sure what our next meeting is.
I don't believe it's until February.
February? Is that, you know, I don't think it's an issue, but that's probably the place to have that discussion, is the Joint Powers Board make that decision, because they have the power to do that.
Okay. I have to have my stuff in the rec schedule in January. Okay.
Questions? I'm anxious to say, I didn't know your schedules. I don't think it'll be an issue with Joint Powers Board either, but...
Yeah, and everybody, nobody, you know, they, they were actually the ones that suggested that parking lot. It's nice, smooth, there's no curb, so nobody's anticipating a problem, it's just a matter of getting my form signed.
And I think what she was saying, that the, the park and rec schedule, that pamphlet or that booklet comes out in January, so...
Everybody's got to turn in their stuff or getting it printed and organized and stuff in the middle of January. I'll just, I, I can just leave it very general as to where the bike rodeo is, and worst comes to worst, I guess I'll hunt around and find somewhere else.
I know, I don't, I think if you, if you folks don't have a problem with it, I say we go ahead and approve it, leave it up to the city. If they have a problem with it, she'll know that, but I...
They'll reject my application.
Yeah, they'll reject, so, I think it's, I don't know that it needs to wait to go to Joint Powers Board.
Okay, I didn't realize you were up against a deadline there, so... All right, thank you. Any questions? Any other questions? Thank you. Is there any action? Any motions?
It's up to you.
You need my signature on the application, is that correct?
I just actually have to just say that I told you. There's a line on here saying, "Did I notify the neighbors?", and the city figured you guys are the neighbors, so...
And I think...
So, yeah, I think we do need a signature saying, yes, I...
Yeah, without objection, we approve. Thank you. We'll do it that way. Without objection, we approve. So you're ready, ready to move forward with the city?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who do I need to sign it?
Our last department report is going to be Vicki with the Finance Office, because I noticed she had some be it noted items, so... The auditor's account with the treasurer, the payroll and additives totals, the highway expenditures report, the registered deed statement of fees collected, and the quarterly financial report. Vicki, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Just to kind of give you an update first of what we've been doing in our office, we had the tax certificate auction on December 16th, and we did have investors come, and it ended up being mainly one investor. They had five different people here, but they purchased $448,000 worth of taxes. So we did get that done and got all the paperwork done for that. So that was a little above what it normally has been, so we did, that was a success. And our levies have been approved. We are going to be sending all of the tax notices down to Qualified Presort, and they will be mailing them out. And they are just completely booked for right now, between everything at the end of the year, so they'll probably go out around the 10th or 15th of January. So you should be expecting to see them in the mail. We are mailing out 17,205 notices for a total of $51,684,000. And that includes everything from the schools, the cities, the townships, the special assessments. So that will be coming. And then to get on to the Finance Officer's Report, Chairman Bartley already said the be it noted, excuse me, be it noted items. And we do have the surplus cash analysis for the end of November was 46%, and that is pretty much in line with other years. It didn't really change much from the October, so, and Stacy later will have some designations for you to go over. And I did hand out to everybody this morning the levy trends, so you have those. They will be on the website later this week, so if you have any questions on those, they are available. And otherwise, just been working with the different departments to make sure that they have enough money and not going over budget for the end of the year. Is there any questions for me?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. All right, we'll move on to item regular business. A is an action to approve Resolution Number 19-59, a resolution approving the fiscal year 2020 official pay plan for Brookings County. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, motion made, seconded. Any comments?
This just sets the positions and the wage grades for those positions moving into the 2020 year. And what this does is mirror what we have currently for staffing.
Any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is an action to approve Resolution Number 19-60, a resolution approving contingency transfers for fiscal year 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there a report?
There is a new contingency resolution in front of you this morning, different from what was included in the packet. Vicki and I continued to make changes right through yesterday, actually. We made some changes. Commission, you'll see a change of 3,000, it's up to $30,000 for professional services. Medical services, we upped that just a little bit for the jail, just due to the child and with the fall that we had there at the jail. We wanted to make sure that we had enough. The other change was BCOAC. We added 3,000 for professional services, that was not on there in the packet. The repairs and maintenance stayed at 10. Utilities actually went up from 2 to 8,000, and then for, and that was all BCOAC. And then emergency management, the last one actually went from 1,000 to 2,000. That's a total of 128,000 in contingency this time. We had some last time as well, at the last meeting, but well within our contingency budget.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Pierce?
What does that leave for the balance in contingency?
Do you, that's one thing I didn't have after I was home yesterday, I think.
It's just under 400,000, 383,000, I believe.
And then that money goes back into the...
General fund.
General fund?
Just rolls into fund balance at year end. Anything unspent.
Any other questions? Any comments? Now we'll call the roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C is an action to approve Agreement Number 19-84, an agreement for detention services between Minnehaha County, Lutheran Social Services of South Dakota, and Brookings County. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Are there any comments or explanation on this, Marty or Stacy?
The amount went up nine dollars, $6.90 per bed per day, so it went from $230 per day to $236.90 per day.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D is an action to approve Agreement Number 19-85, a consultant contract for provision of community health services between Brookings County and the South Dakota Department of Health, Family and Community Health, Child and Family Services. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments or discussion? Comments from anyone?
Just from my staff report, it reflects a 2.5% increase, and that's consistent with the state, the state's salary policy for fiscal year 2020, that this is an increase of about $260 for us.
Any questions? If not, we'll call the roll.
Borzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E is an action to approve Agreement Number 19-86, a memorandum of understanding between SDSU Extension and Brookings County. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there comments or report?
The only change from the previous year is the amount that we provide for our portion of the salary for the 4-H advisor. It's up to $601 to $20,621 for FY 2020, and that is in the 2020 budget.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action F is an action to approve Agreement Number 19-87, an intergovernmental contract with the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments or reports?
The SDPAA, the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, is, provides the county's liability insurance, and anytime they make any changes to this contract, they send that on to the counties and the entities that they work with. Just a couple of minor changes. There was a new subsection C added that provides that a member may only support the appointment or candidacy of one person to the SDPAA Board of Directors in any given year, and then the terminology chairman and vice chairman was revised to chair and vice chair to be gender neutral. Otherwise, the contract remains the same.
Any questions on the contract? Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Item G is an action to approve Agreement Number 19-88, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation between Brookings County and Darwin Olvestead. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion been made and seconded. Comments, Brian?
These agreements, been working hard at trying to get these. This would be for the east side of the bridge north of Bruce. It's just a minor sliver of land, it's, it's under an acre. And we got the, the agreement back from Olvestead there. We're still working on getting the one back from Florida. The landowner went south to Florida, but we got the utilities certificate and this agreement, but we're still working on getting the one from Florida. So the second one that you'll be looking at, I don't have yet. We sent all the information down there for him with a stamp and everything to send it back, but it has not returned yet, so... But this is for the bridge north of Bruce that we'll be submitting right after the 1st of the year.
Any questions? Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Item H then, Brian, we're not ready to handle that? We are ready for aye, but not H?
H.
We are ready for H, the utility certificate, all right. Item H is an action to approve a utility certificate for a big program, project structure Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments on the utility certificate?
Pretty much straightforward, just notifying the utilities that we're going to be working out there, so in the design phase, we can plan a temporary diversion with the utilities if it's needed.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Item I is an action to approve a right-of-way certificate for the big program, structure Is there a motion to approve?
That's what, the one item that he said they're not ready to approve, correct?
So it's still on our agenda, we need a motion to table.
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion been made and seconded. All in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Item is tabled till the next meeting.
Actually, I don't think it'll be ready. The next meeting is next week.
Okay, well...
We're hoping to receive it this week.
Okay.
We, I, we've made contact with him, and he has sent it, it's just not came in the mail.
Okay, I'll leave it, then we'll do it January 7th.
We'll bring it back up and we'll table again.
Okay. Thank you.
Item J is an action to approve Change Order 2 for the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center parking lot project in the amount of $22,580.25. Is there a motion to approve?
Can we, can we even have some discussion on this before we do the change order? Because there's some discussion that may change the, may amend the change order, potentially. Does that make sense?
Traditionally, you have to have a motion to approve when we can amend the, amend the motion.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Now we can have comments about anything on it you want, and if we want to make an amendment, we can, if somebody wants to. Comments? Kristen, do you have a report? We'll go with yours first.
Okay.
Okay. My only conversation about this would be to make sure we have something in writing regarding any repairs or anything that needs to be done in the spring regarding the work that is not complete on the parking lot. We still have a lot of puddles. We still have a lot of water retention in areas. I was verbally told that they would come back in the spring and repair any of those pieces. I don't know if that's being reflected here in a change order, but to me, the job is being left unfinished. And so before we pay their full amount of the one-seventy-seven, eight-eighty-four, I just want to make sure that we have some assurances that this project will be completed, and we are going to have an additional change order to ensure that this project is done in the right manner. Stacy?
Thank you.
So what Boz submitted through, I was working with Brett Henning down in the city engineer's office, and what Boz submitted for payment was above what the bid was and what the amount of the two change orders would come to. The two change, if, if the change order is approved as presented, along with the first change order and then the bid price, it would be this one-seventy-five, eighty, twenty-five. However, Boz had some overage, would cost of about seventy-three hundred dollars that they are asking, would like to ask the commission, if the commission would be willing to pay those overage costs of seventy-three hundred dollars for some gravel and some asphalt. If the commission is willing to do that, that amount, that seventy-three hundred should be added to change order number two to reflect, to reflect that dollar amount, if that makes sense.
I had discussion. I was going to stop out of the office at Boz this week, but they are closed. I did have a conversation with the foreman in charge of the base course process. The intentions of the project were to excavate the gravel that was out there and use back into the base course. We know the weather that we had this fall, that the top lift of gravel on the parking lot was basically unusable. So that reflects the extra two hundred and thirty-five ton of base course that was needed for the, um, base there. That's, that's the overage there. The, I have, I have a call into the person that is in charge of the asphalt crew. I have not received an explanation on the overage on the asphalt, so.
Stacy, do you have the numbers? I just can't remember them. How much the original bid was, how much each of the change orders were?
So on the change order, the original bid was that one, one oh three, two thirty. The first change order was forty-four, seven, seventy. That brought us up to one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. The change order as presented was for twenty-two, five, eighty, twenty-five. But what they're asking is to add an additional seven thousand, three oh four, thirty-seven to that twenty-two, which brings us, instead of the one-seventy, it would bring us to one-seventy-seven, eight-eighty-four, sixty-one.
And the change orders were because we increased the size?
Yes. The first change order was the increase in size. The second change order was because on, I believe, that west end, there was some things that they ran into that were unanticipated just due to, um.
It was due to groundwater being so close, so they did have to excavate that farther, and then they had to bring in some additional mesh and some additional gravel to, to kind of ensure that that wouldn't sink. However, that's the actual area that we have, a large, I'll actually call it a lake, a large lake area. They have come in and they have graded that and put some grooves in the ground. However, after that recent melt before the snow, we still had a very large lake. We are not draining in that area at all.
So, the original bid, the hundred and some, and then we approved the change orders, made it larger, and allowed for all the issues with that. And so then what's, what's the additional twenty-two thousand dollar change order?
That's, that's just what Kristen was talking about.
That's the extra excavation on the undercut and the fabric.
And they, they had done that.
I thought that was the forty, in the forty-four thousand.
No, that was to make it larger.
The forty-four was just to increase the, the size. And that was, that was part of that initial bid. I think they bid it as this size or this extended size. And so we did go ahead and approve the change order fairly quickly to make it the larger size lot. Then they ran into some issues, and I believe there was some discussion that you folks had about doing that other twenty-two thousand, but the change order never came, officially came. So at, at a minimum, the twenty-two-five should be approved. That work is complete.
So in my mind, that's the only change order really. I mean, I understand.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, yeah, the other one was just the increase.
That they're requesting. We requested the other change order to expand it.
Correct, yes.
This is the only one they're requesting.
They're requesting that, and then they're requesting the seventy-three hundred on top of the twenty-two-five to cover overages.
Typically, in construction processes, you should approve overages in advance whenever possible, unless there's some sort of paper trail to document a construction change directive whereby it's necessary in order to keep the project moving on schedule. And I haven't seen any documentation of any of that, so I can't approve something that hasn't been presented, one. And two, if we are still having problems, there's no way we should do this as a retainage-free project. We should hold some retainage to hold their feet to the fire in the spring.
One of my questions on the overages, part of it was gravel. I understand that that's probably necessary if it wasn't, was poor gravel. But the increase in asphalt, it's the same amount of asphalt on it.
Right.
Either way, so I don't understand the asphalt.
That's the one, I don't, I didn't get an explanation for the extra asphalt. I did get an explanation for the extra gravel.
Yeah, so I, I don't have necessarily a problem with gravel, but I do with the extra asphalt, because you'd have had asphalt anyway unless they did three lifts or something instead of two.
They got extra thickness there.
Okay. Their choice.
Yeah.
So they didn't have to come back on their guarantee, which is part of the bid process, is the warranty on it. How do you want to handle it as far as the, the warranty, I guess I would call it, they'll come back and fix this issue in the spring? Do we want to withhold?
Let me ask, Brian, what's, what's typical of a road project to retain for?
Ten percent up to a certain amount.
Alright, so we, I guess my, my question is action on this one in particular, do we approve this change order today as is and ask them to submit additional documentation for an additional change order before we close the project out?
That's how I would probably do it. Make sure that that documentation, the things that Larry have, has specifically asked for to document both of those things should be followed up with the paperwork to do so.
So I don't have a problem going ahead and approving this change order that we have.
Right.
So then the request will be for Stacy or, or Larry to get ahold of and find out documentation and for the additional request for seven thousand. And is there?
Are we going to hold, I mean, is that something, if they give us additional documentation next week, it still doesn't change the fact that we need them there in the spring, and we've already closed out, that'll close out the whole project. I mean, do we, do we hold ten percent back until it's done?
If we, if we approve this change order, we take another motion or another action to, to withhold ten percent. But is that any way, shape, or form in the contracts that we signed that we would have a retention? If we don't, I don't think we can withhold. I'll ask Dan for that question.
That's, that's under the city.
That's the problem, it's with the city.
City bid.
The city bid it. I still think we could approve the change order. As far as the payment is concerned, we'd have that discussion with the city to withhold until it's corrected on our behalf. But again, I ask, is that have to be in the contract, Dan?
Yeah.
And if it's not, it's going to be difficult to withhold payment.
Right.
Okay.
If we approve the change order and there, we're not, we've already spent over, we're going to pay a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Only thing that's being held back isn't ten percent, it's only a seven thousand dollar change order.
About five percent.
So I mean, we can't really approve the payment and the change order and still hold back ten percent because we don't have, we've already paid more, we've already paid more. So I, I don't.
Ten should be seventeen thousand.
My, my thought is this, is I think we, we pay the bill, we pay the change order we agreed to, the twenty-two thousand. We get more documentation, and we look at what the contract says and get some type of assurances from them that they will come back and finish the project in the spring. And if they don't, and we didn't have anything to hold them to the fire, then we remember that, that's our mistake. We didn't have it in the contract, we didn't do it. But I'm hoping they'll get there and get that done in the spring. But we really don't have anything unless we know what's in the contract.
And, and the thing is, rather than just mailing the check, we could send a letter with the check that says, you know, we're, we're forwarding payment on this, and that we need additional information on that, and we just want to confirm what, we've been told verbally that they'll be back in the spring as part of what we're paying to do this, and before they cash those checks, would they please let us know if they disagree with that? You know? And that, that, if it's not in the contract, that would be helpful down the road.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, we've given them notice, we've given our expectations. It's not like it's verbal and nobody told me that. It's in a letter. It's with payment. We've exercised our portion, the new change order, we don't have, we should wait for some information off of that before we approve that, but, yeah. I guess I would just say we should move ahead and not change, not, not add anything to that, approve the twenty-two thousand and the other payment and go from there.
And just confirm what they're going to do in the spring.
Stacy, would you draft that letter, be able to put something in writing for that?
Yes, so what we're asking for is assurances that the project will be complete, completed in the spring. We're going to request an additional change order for the overages.
Change and explanation.
Explanation and a change order for what that is.
Yeah.
And the completion in the spring, do we know exactly what it is that we want them to do? Because we should say that.
I think Kristen should.
Yep, and I think Stacy and I can work together on that, because it's not just completion, it's assurances that the work that they did is actually going to withstand. I mean, if we have standing water, we're going to have cracks in that asphalt come spring. And so if we have cracks in a project that's not even six months old, where does that leave us?
And the warranty information should be in the contract as well.
And I'll get a copy of that contract and forward that to.
Send it to me.
To Dan.
We'll send it to Dan, we'll.
Are we, are we making the payments to the city, or are we making payments to?
This is from Boz.
Directly to Boz.
Okay.
Yeah, I can ask for the finance office when we, if we get this check, just give it to me, and then we'll put the letter with that.
Any other questions? Everybody's happy? We've got a motion to approve? We've had our comments? We'll call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Orsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Kristen. Item K is an action to approve payment to Boz Construction for Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center Parking Lot Project. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. And again, do we do anything else?
And to clarify, this is for the one hundred seventy thousand, five eighty, twenty-five.
That would be correct.
Correct.
That includes our change order, our requested change order, and then the twenty-two thousand, change order number two just approved.
Total one-seventy-seven, gotcha, okay.
So then we are not approving pay request one as in the packet. We are approving an amended pay request one.
Correct.
To reflect change order one and change order two.
Yeah, it was not a change order request officially, so we'll ask for that. But, are we okay, Dan, on all that?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Orsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item M is an action to remove from the table the appointment of Mike Holhouser to a four-year term as Brookings County Veteran Service Officer. Is there a motion to remove it from the table?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Motion carries, it is now removed from the table. The motion was made by Jensen, seconded by Krogman to appoint Michael Holhouser to a four-year term as Brookings County Veteran Service Officer, to turn around from January seven, twenty twenty, January first, twenty twenty-four. And we have some documents there. Any other comments on that appointment? Any other comments from anyone? Been removed from the table, and there's a motion on the floor. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Mike, you are appointed.
Thank you.
You can go back.
Oh, I'm going to stay for the second one.
Oh, yeah, we got it. Item M, M is an action to approve the Human Services Poor Relief Guidelines. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Now comments. Mike, you have comments on the Human Services Poor Relief Guidelines?
Uh, these haven't been updated for a while, and we don't really currently have one that's published. This is taking some of the previous ones and some of the, uh, Poor Relief Guidelines from other counties and put them together. I had the state's attorney, which, thank you very much, Dan, for reviewing that, looked through it, and he saw that, you know, everything met the, the laws and stuff. It's just kind of guidelines. We do have an internal set of policies that we, we do follow that kind of explain things a little different and actually how the process goes from getting the application in and, and step by step, which is, which is more within the office for whoever is in that position. But this is kind of the general guidelines, and this will be the part that we'd ask to be put out on, on the internet, our, under our department.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Motion carries. Item N, thank you, Mike. Item N is an action to approve a request to fill vacancy for corrections sergeant in the sheriff's office slash jail. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Are there any comments? Marty, any comments?
Darren DeYoung is, is going to retire, and he turned fifty-five, so he thought he would retire.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Motion carries. Item O is an action to transfer cash from budget line one oh one dash four dash two eleven dash four twenty-nine one in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and twelve cents to Fund seven-five-nine, the Brookings County Fire Trust Fund. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Comments or reports?
This is an annual action that we take at year end to move whatever budget is left in the general fund, and that moves that cash then over to Fund seven fifty-nine, which is their long-term, the fire department's long-term account. What they do is keep track of those dollars internally, and then they divvy those out to each of the fire departments in the, in the county. So if they have larger equipment requests, you'll see once, maybe twice a year, that they'll come and request funds for different fire departments out of that long-term fund.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Orsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item P is an action and possible action on funding for a site survey for the I-29, Twentieth Street South Interchange. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. And just comments on that? We've got a report.
The city received two quotes for the site survey that they are, I believe they've already started that right, right after Christmas or right before Christmas. CDI had the low quote of thirteen thousand, five hundred. Leave the county's, the city's request for the county is to pay help with half of that cost, so six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I guess I got a question. This is above and beyond the, the two million we have already.
That's correct.
Put aside for this project. I thought we were just basically a monetary contributor to this project. Now we're being billed or asked to share in the cost of the survey. The other question I had was who, who are we responsible for this overpass when it is completed? Well, the city, the county, the state, I don't know if those questions have been asked either. And also, will, will we be asked to acquire this road from the township? It's still a township road. I don't know if these questions have been answered yet. I guess, I feel we've been, um, very gracious with our two million contribution towards this project and the site survey, and where will this stop? It'll be additional, will they keep adding up? When this project first started, we, we agreed we'd upgrade two-hundred-and-fourteenth Street to the overpass. That was the initial. Then we had money set aside, which we felt would cover the cost of this. Well, as time went on, the requirements to apply for the grant, we were asked to, to commit the two million for this project. Well, as time went on, the requirements to apply for the grant, we were asked to, to commit the 2 million for this project. I just have, have some questions that, you know, I'd like to have an answer. I don't know, Brian, if anything has been asked of you. Uh, I attended a meeting with Stacy last week. Like I said, it's still a township road and I'm wondering who's gonna be responsible for this road in the future.
That, that might be a different issue, but I'd like to talk about the survey costs and then we can talk about that because I don't have that answer. Okay? With the survey costs.
Is your bike on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I, I really think that we need to contribute our, a share on the cost of that survey. In a project like this, I think we have to be careful not to be penny wise and pound foolish, okay? If I put it, put it that way. We're talking about around $7,000 when you divide that in half. And the reason that money is not coming out of the $2 million is because we don't yet have all, have negotiated through the whole agreement with the federal government in order to be able to start applying our $2 million. On the other hand, we have not a long deadline to get things done. And for some of the work that needs to get started, the survey has to be the first thing. And if we um, front the cost for the survey with both the city and the county, understanding we don't get credit against each of our $2 million is on that, then some other work that needs to be get, to be, to be done can be started while that agreement is getting hammered out with the federal government. And they're not really fast with that part and we want to be up and running. And I really think that for us to make a $7,000 commitment for that survey is a worthwhile expenditure for us. We have those funds available and having the survey done will make a huge difference in moving this project forward. If we wait, he waited, I, I don't know how long, I can't remember, I've heard it, but months and months before they had their agreement with the um, feds. So we get this started, we can start working through the project. If there's another request for additional money and, and we're not interested at that point in contributing, we can make that decision. But I really think for the survey costs, that this is not an uh, unfair ask by the city. That, that's my position. I don't know the answer to the question on the road.
Ms. Pierce, it is a city project.
The city was the applicant.
Correct. And the, and the limits of the project are from 34th Avenue to 20, to uh, 22nd.
Right.
I don't see where, I mean, we have committed um, towards the survey before, earlier, the traffic survey.
Traffic counts.
Uh, we've also contributed twice to, when we um, applied for the grant or the city applied for the grant, we contributed twice to that also.
Right.
In the future, anything above this, are we gonna be responsible for half of those costs also? Any overages?
We haven't agreed to do that. And I think we're going to have to have that conversation at some point. But today, the question is, is the slightly less than $7,000 to be used for survey costs?
Just a comment that I would have on the $7,000 in the survey. The survey do, does include the township road that we're talking about. And we're gonna have to have some sort of survey done on that, you know, in order to make some decisions on what we're gonna do with that particular road and who we're gonna, who's gonna handle it and whatever. I assume the county's gonna have to handle it from the bridge over to, to uh, 34th. So at this point in time, I, you know, yeah, $7,000, yes, it's, but it's a survey that does include part of our, our county property, so to speak, or township property. So I don't have a problem with the $7,000 today. I agree with Commissioner Jensen that we do have to form an agreement of some sort with the city if they're handling the project. With the state and administrative, they don't have that figured out yet, but once they do, uh, we have to have some sort of an agreement on how we're gonna handle overages, how we're gonna handle additional expenses outside of the grant approval. I do understand that this has to be handled rather quickly. We have a short timeframe to, to get to the point where we get obligated funds, I believe is the term, from the feds to, to move forward with the project, so. But we do have to have that discussion either with Larry and Brian who've assigned to that, that uh, board. We have to have some additional discussions on, on how active we want to be. We're 2 million, the city's 2 million and the east side private and uh, individual donation is 670,000 and they're not participating in this part of it. So uh, we are, but they're not. Um, we have to have these discussions in the future as how we're gonna split that up in the future. Yeah. It needs to be understood before we get much further with the project. So I don't have a problem with this today because it does survey our property also, or our obligation, I shouldn't say our property, but our obligation on the east side.
That, that was my question. This, this surveying is taking place on both sides.
Both sides. 34th to 22nd.
Being done.
Yes.
And so, and, and that's why I think um, you know, I'm okay with this one. But I think I personally want to go on record that by agreeing to this, by no means say that I'm willing to share uncovered expenses equally for this project. That's not what we intended. We intended to make a commitment. This has been led by the city. Um, is there benefits to the county? Absolutely. That's why we're participating. But um, this is not our project, okay? And so um, we want to, you know, work with the city into it and that kind of stuff too. But to come afterwards and say, you guys approved splitting costs of uncovered things and overages is not what I want to come out of this, this vote. So um, I'm approving this because it, the efficiencies of having one saver, surveyor do the whole work, our portion, their portion of it, makes a lot better sense than us hiring separate surveyors and bidding out and doing that type of thing. And I think time is of the essence of this, of this project. But again, my thoughts is, is I'm by no means, if I vote yes for this, that uh, we feel we, we're willing to split 50/50 any overages or any uncovered things that happen again in the future. But I do understand the timing of it and, and I think it is important for the project as a whole and I don't want to hold it up.
And that's exactly why I wanted to bring this up. I don't want to be held exactly what Ryan's saying. For anything in the future, I understand the survey needs to be done. I, I think they've been out there the last few days doing this. It needs to be done. I, I don't disagree. I don't want to set a precedence by approving this on a 50/50 basis and be in, in the future.
And I, I, I agree also. I think today's action is this particular request only. I think we need to, to put an agreement together before any other action comes before us for any other funding. So uh, my thoughts are this is one-time deal. Any other actions for requests, we have to have an agreement with the city on how we're gonna handle it. So uh, we'll get that started right away. Any other comments?
Well, I, and I do want to say this too, that because it's handling both, I think there are efficiencies in that. And if there's something else that's out and above that handles, that we would be under our 2 million, I would be open to that too. But you know, I just, I don't, I don't think that it's just gonna be rubber stamped as 50/50 on everything. So I'm, I'm not saying I'll never do 50/50 on anything, but if there's efficiencies that can be done, timeliness and save some money uh, by both city and the county contributing to get the work done on both sides in an efficient manner, I'm open to that. But uh, um, and that's not open into the 50/50 blanket coverage.
And again, the project uh, was approved from 34th to 22nd, so it's already approved. Our 2 million will be used on the.
Yeah.
Obviously on the improvement on the other east side.
So, and I, I think I'm hearing that when we vote that we're gonna approve the survey costs. But to answer Commissioner Jensen's question, which is who has responsibility then for the, the road?
Future maintenance.
Up to 34th. Isn't that a conversation that we need to have? What, what position we're gonna take if that remains township or not? City's not really involved in that conversation, are they? Isn't that something we have to decide?
Well, there's gonna have to be some sort of understanding of who plows that road to the, you're not gonna plow it to the middle of the bridge and turn around and go back, so.
Yeah.
Uh, Brian and uh, uh, I suppose the city streets who are pretending are gonna have to get together and figure out the best.
This is, this is very similar to what we have going on over in Volga. And we're gonna have to look at a jurisdictional transfer between the township and the county. No difference between the city of Volga and the county.
Okay.
I had a chance to talk to DOT Director yesterday and typically the DOT will plow the on-off ramps. And typically if they come up an on-ramp, they go across and do the on-ramp uh, within those limits. If the county comes from the east, they go up to the ramp, turn around and go back. I mean, that's typically the way it's done.
Good.
So that covers the bridge then too, or no? I didn't quite understand that.
Somebody has to do the bridge too.
We'll get that worked out.
The DOT doesn't do the bridge.
Well.
If it's ever coming through, it has to get it done, I guess.
Whoever gets there first.
The first, I think the first part of the process, it, somebody needs to acquire this road from the township. It's still.
Yeah.
Actually a township road and it needs to be acquired either by us, the city, uh, so work can be performed on it, so.
So I understand that that's part of the uh, right away acquisition that hasn't been done yet and needs to be done. We don't have the IGR report completely finished either, so there are some other additional work that needs to be done. This, as I understand it, and as I sat on the uh, broadcast anyway with the DOT is this has to be done to get that project far enough along that we can ask the feds to give us the ability to spend the funds, the 2 million that we have and the government's money and the 2 million the city has and the 670 of the private investors. So we get those IGR reports and things paid for by those funds rather than us paying for it, the city paying for it. So it's, hopefully this is the only one and we won't see others, but if we do, we're gonna have an agreement in place to handle it.
And we can deal with those one at a time based on whether it's something that we feel is a benefit to the county.
Well, based on our, our agreement, we're gonna put.
Once we have the agreement in place.
All right, is there any other comments? If not, we'll call the roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bozma.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item Q is end of year designation. It's a discussion and possible action to assign general fund, fund balance dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
What are we making a motion for, I guess? Do we need to have the designation first before we make the motion or?
Well, the motion is to approve it and then we'll have discussion and.
If you want somewhere to start, you can look at the recommendations that I provided in my staff report.
All right, let's go ahead and do it that way. Let's go ahead and do your recommendations and then we'll make a motion based on each of these. Suggestions, so.
So in reviewing um, where we would be with year-end designations, keeping in, keeping in mind there are still some bills yet to be paid. So these percentages will be probably slightly lower than what I'm presenting today. I just don't have those exact dollar figures yet. But um, we have about 2 and 1/2 million. You know, our goal is to get down to about that 25% of general fund surplus at year end. You can see at the bottom part, um, designating 2 and 1/2 million would get us to 26%, knowing that that will be a little bit lower because we're still paying some bills and I don't have those dollar amounts just yet. So my recommendation um, would be, and the other thing that I actually had noted that um, was to start designating and the discussion uh, held probably earlier this year was $30,000 each year through uh, 2022 for sheriff's department radio updates and we'll expense that out in 2023. In June of this year, that, that cost was um, 115,595. Knowing that that will also go up by the time uh, 2023 rolls around and we need to, to buy these radio updates. So we're just being proactive in designating some funds now, knowing that we have that fairly significant purchase for the sheriff's office in 2023. Now, if you don't want to designate that, that's fine. Um, we can, we can adjust that. But my recommendation would be 30,000 for the radios, 1 million for the interchange project um, that we've just been discussing. We do have, at the end of last year, um, the board designated 1 million into that. Can see that here. See what ours. So it's here, we did 1 million last year at this time. Um, we've committed to 2 million. If we do the other, designate that other million, that will get us up to that 2 million committed amount. And then the remaining to get us to 2.5, so 1.47 million, my recommendation would be designating it for the jail project.
If we do that, just, just to clarify, because I want to have this number in my head here. What we have set aside then for the jail would be the 4 million that was previously assigned. And then the 2.4 that's in, and maybe we could call it.
Yes.
2.5 that's in the um, 301 fund.
Yep.
Okay.
What's the detention center expansion? 580 or 18?
And that's what we've collected, is that right, from the levy, the tax levy we're doing?
Where are you? Yeah.
Right below the 304.
304 fund?
Yes.
So that wouldn't count into it.
Well, that would.
Six and a half. I mean, yeah, but that's part of the 10 million dollar levy. I mean.
That's part of the bond, yes.
And the total on the bond is what again?
7.4.
7.4.
So with those uh, those um, what did I do? 7.4 for the bond plus about 2.5 in the building fund plus four, we're at 13.9 million.
Maybe we can drag it out for.
The 1.47 would put us just over 15 million designate either between the bond and then designations. Now, if you don't want to do the 30,000 for the radios, if that's something you want to just budget for at that time and not have that money set aside, we could do that too. And then I would suggest giving the, the extra 30 to the jail project. So one and a half for the jail and one for the interchange.
I myself am fine with Stacy's recommendation. The 30,000, the 1 million and the 1.47.
Question, I guess. So unassigned, so we take 2 and 1/2, we're gonna take this out of the general fund 101. We are, and we're taking this out of unassigned fund balance, which is about 3.2. We're gonna take uh, 2.5 out of that. That's gonna leave us with.
And the, and these numbers on this page um, reflect, don't get changed from time to time. So what we really need to look at is the surplus cash analysis. That's the wrong report. Sorry, general fund, Vicky's report. So really unassigned right now is the 6.5.
I guess I'm not seeing that. Why?
Right here.
No, I see that, but I mean, I'm not sure the two together don't. Because then.
Cause changes to that fund balance, that spreadsheet that we showed you, that's really just to show designations. Because that sheet won't change until we roll everything at end, at year end. So really that fund balance sheet stays the same from month to month to month unless you do something mid-year. But um, you know, it changes on, on these sheets, but it's, this actually shows all of the changes that have taken place throughout the year. That spreadsheet really is just to show what you have designated. But keep in mind, I mean, doing the 2.5 gets us down to um, page two. About 26%. It'll probably more, be more along the lines of the maybe 23, 24% probably because we still have bills yet to pay.
And none of the transfers will go into the 301. They'll all go into the.
They're just gonna be designated within the general fund. So all it takes is if, if at any point you need to unassign funds because we have um, a, a, a big emergency. a, a, a big emergency come up and we need access to those dollars, it's just, it's just action by the board to unassign it at any time. So it'll just be assigned within the general fund, those dollars. And keep in mind, we're at 46% right now. We have to be under 40% uh, at year end by statute. So, um, if you're concerned about the dollar amount, you'd have to do at least, I'd say, a million in designations so that we're not over a 40% at year end.
How, how are we sitting with our bridge projects? Cause we assume that they would be done this year, but they're getting rolled into next year.
Any dollars that, that, um, were, were budgeted this year, we'll, we'll roll into fund balance. That's in the highway fund, that has nothing to do with the general fund. And then if we need to access those next year, it would be just a supplemental budget hearing. We have to give notice in a public hearing, so.
Any other questions?
Is what your question was, do we have funds in the highway fund to pay for whatever we have outstanding?
Yeah, we do.
Cause they're supposedly being completed this year, they're rolling in next year, so.
You can correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but anything that was budgeted for that didn't get done this year, it's going to roll into fund balance. And if we need to access those dollars, we'll just.
One of the things Vicky and I looked at when we took a look at my budget was, what your guys are talking about is the funds that didn't get expended this year because of the delayed work will be going into next year.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in, well, first of all, we have to have a motion. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd move to approve year end designations at the two and a half million dollar amount with the 30,000 for radios, a million for the interchange and the 1.47 to the jail.
Second. A motion made and seconded, any other comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes. Item R is an action to declare items as surplus property to transfer, sell or dispose of. And we have a list, is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any report on the surplus items? All right, hearing none, any comments?
2019 Dodge Durango.
That was.
Totaled though.
That was the one that was totaled, right, Marty? That Durango?
Yeah, that was totaled in the car deer accident. And the insurance took it.
Didn't like it.
All right, I was going to say, if you didn't like the 2019, we're trading it in already.
Yeah, I don't even have 15,000 miles. I shed a tear on that one, but I did ask, when, when he called me, I did ask if he was okay first.
Yeah.
I bet.
Any other discussions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Item nine is a commission department director's report and we have all kinds of documents there.
Yes, we do. So the first item was the surplus cash analysis. We've kind of been talking about that, Vicky talked about that. We were at about, uh, 46% for month end November, which was right at, um, the nine-year average for us. Um, I, before I go any further, the first thing I did have on my staff report was, um, to discuss the, um, joint city and county meeting regarding that joint jurisdiction ordinance. I'd mentioned at the last meeting that we were going to meet, meetings at 5:30, um, prior to the city council's meetings. Uh, I think it was like the 14th and the 21st of January. Due to, uh, the county's 14-day publication requirement, um, it doesn't work to have the second reading two weeks after the first. So that first meeting, the first reading will still be held at 5:30 on January 14th, here in this room. The second reading will have to be February 11th, still at 5:30. Again, that's prior to the city council meeting that night, but I want, that's a change to your calendars. So I think I'd had it on, um, later in January, but now it will be at their, their meet, first meeting in February at 5:30 PM. Does that still work for people I see heads shaking, yes? Okay. Um, I did include the 20, an updated 2020 calendar, uh, in your packet and it is very bright and colorful. Um, there's just so many different things that are now included on this that I had to change my colors around. They're kind of obnoxious, but we'll go with it. Um, the only change from what I had presented prior was the equalization board meeting on the 14th of April. It, I had it initially combined with your meeting on the 7th. We've done that in the past where you have commission in the morning and then convene as the board of equalization in the afternoon. However, um, Jacob informed me due to, um, stat, state statute, you have to meet the second Tuesday in April. So I guess my question is, so it's, it would be a separate meeting, it would be a third meeting, but it would just be equalization boards. Um, we'd probably do it that morning instead of the afternoon. So it would be, um, you know, usually we get done, it all depends. We will have no idea how long it will last, but my, I guess my recommendation would be to plan to meet at 8:30 that morning of the 14th and, and work through things if that, if that works for everybody. Yes? Yes, yes, okay. We will leave that as is.
You think, are we just blocking the morning off?
Yes, for sure the morning. Uh, we really won't have any idea until March, how many, um, how many applicants there are to, to review our applications for.
For the past 10 years, I mean, it's probably been over within a couple hours. We've had a handful of appeals, but you never know. I mean, you could have more appeals this year, we could have none. We just don't know until that time comes, so. Couple hours is average.
The other thing is, um, coming up on January 15th is Brookings Day at the Capitol. Um, I, in your packets, there was some information on some talking points. If, if there is something specific that the board would like to discuss, uh, we do have the meeting next week that we can look at, um, you know, putting something together or if someone has some ideas or suggestions, you can let me know and get those, get those to you, or how, how would you like to handle that?
What is, what is your all position on that bill that, um, Tim Reed is one of the cosponsors on regarding, uh, penny on sales tax to be used for law enforcement related things? Because that might be a talking point that we would want added onto the list. Dan might know a little bit more about that than I know. Do we have a position on that?
Our trade group took a position to approve it, correct?
Have you heard anything? From Christie?
I don't know, I thought they did, I guess I could be wrong.
I saw the bill when, when Tim sent it out, but.
I thought so. But is that, is that something sales tax? I thought it was be, be in.
Be, you're right, it is.
Yeah, it's not blanket sales tax, it's just on, I think, gas stations, hotels and one other one, but it's not like a blanket all sales tax. It's just specific to, I think, three primary entities. Yeah, it would be used for law enforcement. I think Tim mentioned that, uh, emergency services, ambulance type services would be included in there, but it'd be specifically allocated to law enforcement within that county. Um, and it'd allow the counties to, to put this in place, yeah.
I think it included adult defense too, did it not? Are you, are you able to pull that up or, or no?
No.
I was looking at Stacy, but.
I've not seen it, I never received the bill.
Oh, okay. Adult defense is included in there, isn't it? In that bill, I was thinking it was, and juvenile, I thought there was something on juveniles and adult defense, but I don't remember for sure.
We could have Tim possibly come at the next county commission meeting and present on it. I know the state's attorneys association's been briefed on it. Um, I know they've, as you and I were talking previously, this is something that's been pushed the last two years. As something I, you know, I, I'm supportive of, I think it's long overdue. I think the, as we've seen here in the recent media, I mean, felony convictions and offenses are at an all-time high in Brookings County. We're not alone, other counties are facing the same issue. Um, and I just think that at some point in order to fulfill our obligation to enforce the law, we just need help. And I think there's a lack of resources here and I think this gives us an avenue to do that. And I think it's long overdue, but.
Just, uh, clarify, it has, uh, Tim sent an email out to us, uh, the bill is proposed by Senator Wayne Steinhauer. Will allow counties to collect sales tax on hotels, prepared foods and alcohol, the same as currently allowed for cities. The use for the funds raised are limited to cover protection costs, including costs for law enforcement, incarceration, judicial services, rehabilitation of those convicted of crimes and intervention, intervention services for persons needing substance abuse or mental health treatment. And there's a good chance that ambulance services will be added to the possible uses. Tim will be carrying the bill in the house and he's assuming that Brookings County will not have any issues with this bill, wanted to make sure we knew about it. If you have any questions or concerns, you, you'll be checking in with city officials, chamber and CBB. Anytime you had any new additional checks, taxes like this, uh, we're going to hear from some people in the hotel industry and liquor industry and some others. So apparently if it's alcohol, I don't know if it's prepared foods and alcohol would be all the bars in the city of Brookings and all the county would have a tax. It would be the third, basically like the third B.
Yeah, and, and talking with some other people also, I, I think there's been a little bit of pushback from, uh, the cities. But I think, I understand is if, if it doesn't include a, a increase of all sales tax, that if it's just limited to three Bs, that there'd be much more receptive to it than us raising the sales tax for everything.
Right.
From, from what, some of the conversations that have been going.
Yeah, and I, I think that would be the only way you'd ever get it passed out in peer, is if it was just a three. If it was blanket, I don't think you'd ever get it passed, so.
It'd be difficult to get Tim here and.
That's true.
During the legislative session.
We could still try though.
Promote it, but.
Tim's a trooper.
It would be a, a question to ask him, obviously, at, uh, one of the Saturday forums.
Yeah.
He'd be here, could explain his bill and I'm sure he will.
I guess the question is, is whether or not, who else is going to go out to peer? I'm, I'm planning on going, who else is going?
I'm going.
Brookings Day?
Yeah.
The thing is, it'd be something that would be up to each individual county to decide if they wanted to levy that tax anyway, correct? It's, it's a means for to raise more funds.
Right, it's not a statewide deal, correct?
For a directed use per county on a per county basis.
Correct.
Um, and it's identified for what it's going to be used for, so.
It is.
So I, I would not ever want to take that away from our other counties, that ability to raise those, those funds.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately it's still a local control issue, which I think is good.
And Stacy, would you be able to get a copy of that and send it out to everybody so everybody has a chance to read it?
It'd be interesting to see what the projected revenues are for Brookings County on something like that.
Got the same email I got, yeah. I just know the counties in the past have asked for, uh, a sales tax on alcohol, period. And none of the rest of it, it just never got any legs. It'll allow counties to, to pass that, so it's going to be an uphill battle for it. I, I don't disagree with that.
That might be one of the reasons why, as we're looking at talking points for the 15th, if, I think it's the 15th, whatever that date is, that, um, if, if we are interested in supporting that, that we're at least generating some conversation as we're talking to people.
Again, I mean, the conversation needs to continue to happen for those counties that just cannot continue to work on a negative basis because they can only raise so many funds. There's, there's got to be something that's going to come to head. So if you don't have the, continue to have that conversation, uh, it, it just takes a while out there to get everybody on board, so.
All right, well, we still have your report, or you're finished?
Nope.
I didn't think so.
Can I ask another question on the talking points? I myself haven't seen anything else that looks like from a county perspective that, that we want that on our list of talking points or the list that everybody else that's going out with talks about. Is anybody aware of any other legislation that, that relates to counties? And is Jacob aware of anything going on with, with the tax stuff? Haven't heard anything? It just didn't look like a lot when, when we were looking at what's coming down, so, okay.
I'll try to get some of that information and that bill and send it out.
And you'll get the talking point thing back to whoever sent the request out? I can't remember if that came from the chamber, I think it came from the chamber, where they want, they, they've got the list on the talking points. We should get that bill on there.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. Um, information in my packet, on, there's information on the, um, endowment fund for the state veterans cemetery. Um, there is a bunch of information included with my staff report. I didn't know if it was something that the board was interested in looking at. If it is, I would put it on a future agenda to help with funding that cemetery, the new veteran cemetery down near Sioux Falls.
I'd agree, you can put it on a future agenda. Mike, I'll leave it up to you to bring us information on that request, if that's okay?
I have also included in my report information on the Russian delegation. Bob Burns is going to be bringing along, um, some delegates from, from Russia through the South Dakota World Affairs Council, February 18th. I've been in conversation with him, um, about, we do have a commission meeting that morning. Um, they may come and, and spend some of their morning here during our meeting, but then there's opportunities to visit one-on-one with them and present some information that afternoon. So I'd like you just to have it kind of on your, on your radar, on your calendars, um, as things develop and we get a little bit closer. I'm sure I'll have some, some more information on that. I did hand out a letter this morning, a resignation letter from William Davidson from the hospital, uh, the hospital board, board of trustees. We will go ahead, if it's okay with the board, we'll go ahead and advertise that position. I'll have, um, applications due probably January 15th by the end of the day so that, uh, we can get that, applications in and approved at our second meeting in January, the, I believe that's 20, the 21st.
Okay, without objection. Thank you.
And then lastly, I had sent out, um, a, a thank you and a survey from the egg appreciation banquet that the chamber had sent out with that. I gave you each a hard copy, I'd emailed it out, I think maybe last week. If, if you want to complete that and get that back to me or turn that in, that's completely, yourself, that's completely up to you, that's fine. And just some other, um, upcoming dates, we'll be closed tomorrow for the new year holiday. The Volga Fire Department County Feed is Monday, January 13th, starting at 5:30 over at the Volga Fire Hall. We've been discussing Brookings, uh, Day at the Capitol, January 15th. January 17th, there's another flyer in your, um, in your, in my staff report and packet about a county holiday party starting at 5 o'clock down at the 9. This is put on by our employee committee. And then the 20th is Martin Luther King Junior Day Holiday and offices will be closed. That's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Any other questions for Stacy? Hearing none, we'll move on to the state attorney's office report, Dan.
Yeah, just briefly, um, you probably saw last week, there was some news stories that had been written about our diversion program that we implemented earlier this spring. It's been very. It's been very successful and I'll present on that here in the next couple of weeks at the commission meeting, um, along with my annual report. Also, you'll probably be seeing some stories, uh, here in the next week. Uh, Kello's running another story tonight, um, along with kind of the, what I had mentioned previously, that the THC oil that we've now been seeing a lot of in this year has, basically, I mean, it, this, this year is our number one felony conviction year uh, in the history of South, Brookings County. Uh, and this is something that other counties are seeing and it's affecting us here as well just because of the college population that we have, um, and it's readily available because it's coming over from Colorado. Um, but this is the substance that is commonly vaped using a vaporizer. Um, and we've seen some of that and so Kello had reached out to me and wanting more information on what we're seeing. They talked to the police department as well, so you'll probably see that story today. Um, and I'll report more on that, um, here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, the good news is that as an office, uh, I've made several modifications and efficiencies internally with our document processing that we've done, uh, which has saved the county thousands of dollars. Uh, in two thousand seventeen, there was twenty-two thousand dollars paid out in overtime to the state's attorney's office. Another twenty-two thousand paid out in overtime in two thousand eighteen. And then in this year, uh, we've only paid out fourteen thousand in overtime. Um, and so that's an eight thousand dollar savings, uh, this year compared to the two previous years. Uh, yet we've processed almost a hundred more felonies in the office. And so that's something we're very proud of as an office, uh, and something the taxpayers, I think, are thankful for as well. And I'll share more about that, uh, what those processes are that we've made more efficient and modified, uh, here in the next couple of weeks. But you'll probably see that story coming out as well. So all things are good, uh, you know, we're staying busy, obviously, but, uh, trying to do it in a way that is, uh, efficient and, uh, meaningful for the taxpayers, so.
Thank you, any questions for Dan? Saying done, we'll move on to commissioner reports and discussion items. We do have some documents you see, uh, listed with the dairies and also Christmas kids cops, thank you. And we'll start with Commissioner Pierce for your report.
On December tenth, um, I attended the CMAR interviews with the rest of you. Went to the legislative luncheon on December eleventh and, um, that again is, was interesting as always. Public affairs on December twelfth, where we talked a lot about those talking points and what's going to be going on with Brookings Day. And then, I forgot, are you RSVPing for whoever's going from here, is that?
I can't, does anybody plan to ride the bus out to Brookings Day? The charter, are you gonna drive yourself?
I already took care of my RSVP.
You did, okay.
I'm gonna ride the bus.
Okay.
I'll ride the bus. Bus guys.
I'll ride the bus.
And Mike?
I don't know.
Larry, are you gonna ride the bus?
Well, I might drive. I may have to leave early. I'm going, but I just don't.
I'm going to RSVP for Dan Leann and Mike. Ride the bus. And if you need me to at some point, let me know. Okay.
Then on, um, December eighteenth, uh, BEDC had its quarterly meeting. Went to the census meeting on, uh, December nineteenth, which, uh, Mr. Hill's already reported on. And that would be my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Borzba.
Uh, December tenth, I was also at the CMAR interviews. The tenth, in the evening, we had a four-H promotion and expansion committee meeting. Uh, the eleventh was also legislative luncheon and on the sixteenth, we had a Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness Board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Cogman.
Uh, yes, CMR, uh, CMAR interviews, uh, also, um, December eleventh at pre-legislative luncheon. And then yesterday, we had Brookings Health, uh, meeting. And, uh, their last four or five months have come in very good and, uh, looking, December's looking really good, but so far they're showing a profit and, uh, it's gone, had a good year for them. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
On the tenth, uh, between commission and our executive session, I had an extension board meeting at noon. Sonia gave a report on the four-H shooting sports. And there is a waiting list of kids, uh, wanting to participate. But, uh, unfortunately, uh, they're short of volunteers, uh, to oversee the, um, the, the kids. And I guess if more volunteers come forward and, uh, they'll fill them spots, but, uh, they're gonna be needing, uh, more time and space, uh, to make available. They are going in on Sundays now and shooting Sunday afternoons, which is great. So they're, they're getting more kids interested in four-H shooting sports. On the eleventh, did the interviews. On the sixteenth, had a twentieth street overpass meeting, uh, it was kind of a brief meeting Stacy and I attended. On the twenty-seventh, I, uh, went up to the four-H winter calf show, uh, briefly at the animal science arena. There was, uh, fifty-plus participants from neighboring, uh, neighboring four-H communities, so, uh, from different counties. And also, um, uh, one night during my Christmas shopping, I walked into Walmart and, uh, all the cops and kids, uh, were out there shopping and, uh, uh, there was a lot of, uh, law enforcement personnel there and kids. And, uh, I'd like to thank all the officers that volunteer their time to participate in that program.
Thank you. Well, you guys well-covered everything I did too, the Samir, the potluck. Oh, I did the potluck, nobody else did the potluck. I came up for the potluck dinner, that was really a lot of food, a lot of food, good food too. To do legislative lunch and so forth, I met on the eighteenth with Mary Jo Minor from, uh, Mills Construction with some concerns on, on, uh, affordable housing in the community and, uh, her suggestions of how we may move forward with that. And I told her we'd certainly look at it after the first of the year and maybe have a presentation. And that completes my report. All right. Item twelve is an executive session in accordance with South Dakota codified law one dash two-five dash two, parentheses one, parentheses four, personnel and contract negotiation. We need a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
There a second, motion been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries, we will take a ten-minute recess and meet in executive session.